Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little miscue on my part. Can I please have a motion to start the meeting, please? Mike and Heather. We, right now, are at the public comments part of our agenda. Any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. The school board encourages public participation at its meetings. To allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present their vows, their views, the following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions/concerns be submitted in writing with speaker's contact information, name, address, and phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately five minutes, which is agreed upon by the Board. The Board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to Chair. Community members may not poll individual Board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Once again, members of the community are encouraged to attend and speak during public comments. Undue interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Board of Education Business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. While individuals have the right to email the Board with questions or concerns at any time, the Board will not read emails aloud during the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation. Victoria?
Good evening. No, unless there's, yeah, no, no. Apparently, there's no public comment. Good evening. I'm happy to share another budget presentation with you all. I have a new clicker, so I have to read the instructions on it. So we're just going to review, again, our draft revenue budget, our draft expense budget, and then also talk a little bit about contingency budget implications, just because it's that time of year, and while we certainly hope that our community will support our budget, we need to be aware of the implications if we end up on a contingency budget. So the first thing I wanted to share is that, and I believe Superintendent Ferrin included in his Friday update, I had, just to triple-check, because I don't come from a district that has debt or a debt service fund, so I called our representatives at Bernie Donigan last week and went over with them kind of how we had planned to structure the use of the debt service fund. And so they actually have a recommendation to modify how we were planning on doing that. Their thought process was that because using the debt service fund does have implications for our tax levy limit calculation, they actually encouraged me to structure it a little bit differently this year. So we had put in the budget for our BOSI's payment for this first year, which is a smaller payment. The actual payment that's due to BOSI's on July 15th is $256,110. But originally Bernie Donigan's office had had us budget $65,000, which would be a principal and interest payment on that amount. They recommended that instead of using that $400,000 of the debt service fund in the first year, that we instead switch the structure so that we would actually use $256,000 in the first year and pay that first payment in cash, which does then allow us to lower the amount that we will finance long-term. And they would like to, if the Board is comfortable with that scenario, then they would like to come up with a projection for the best way to utilize the debt service fund over the next several years, keeping with the idea that we want to use it and, you know, give the benefit back to the taxpayers. So that was one of the major changes between our last meeting and today. Any questions on that before we move forward? No? Okay. So this is the revised revenue budget. New York State aid is still at the same amount that we had pegged last meeting. You will, probably those of you who've been on the Board for a long time feel the same as I do, it's now April 5th, we do not have a New York State budget. It's like we just stepped back in time. I feel like for a while there, we were good about getting State budgets on time, but now I'm not sure when it's going to be coming down. I hope before we adopt our budget. If not, we will go with what we have for now. I did increase as well our Medicaid revenue budget, because we've already received more than I had budgeted for next year. In this current year, we've exceeded that, so I increased that a little bit. The pilot is the same. I actually increased our other revenue sources by about $9,000, and then reduced the transfer from debt service. Because that reduction does impact our revenue budget as a whole, I did put back in $150,000 in appropriated fund balance for this year. So it's down $150,000, but there is $150,000 more than we had in the last meeting. So that, our tax levy now is actually a bit lower than it was because of that implication of the debt service fund. So our tax levy is going up $733,249, which is about 2.45%. And our budget is now $48,922,581. So the expense budget is also $48,922,581. And some things have adjusted here. The biggest adjustment being, as I had mentioned last time, that I reduced the employee benefits because Dr. Boyd has budgeted employee benefits in the grants. And so I felt comfortable in reducing our general fund budget to accommodate that. And that's kind of what we had been planning on doing.
Victoria, do we anticipate any state aid?
It's really hard to know. I have not heard anything that would indicate that they're expecting to really increase state aid, but, you know, this district does have a lower wealth ratio, so if they are going to target schools, I would think that we would be in line. But I really haven't heard.
And from what I've read, the issue with the state budget is not the money is allocated to schools, there's other items that are holding that up. So hopefully, you know, it's a pretty favorable budget year as far as increases in aid, so we certainly hope that carries through into the adopted budget. So the subtraction of $150,000 out of the allocated, the fund balance allocation. I know at the last meeting, we were bouncing around $300,000, and now it's $150,000. I was just curious on, what would the effect be on the calculated tax levy if we left it at $300,000? Fund balance applied to budget.
So, right, if you look at the tax levy, 1% is about $300,000, so it would be about a half a percent. It would get it down to about 2%. Do we want to ponder that and come back to it?
It would bring it up, right? Mike, you're talking about making it, bringing it back down to the $1 million? Are you talking about bringing it back up to...
Bringing it back down to $1 million.
Oh, I thought you were talking, bringing it up to 1 point.
No, because our last one said it was 1 million.
So I assume the counter is true, then it would go to just under 3%.
Right.
Or if adjustments can be made, right?
I can't actually increase the tax levy.
Okay, so...
That is the limit. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your thought process.
So if, if...
So we would need to either cut an additional $150,000 or assume it in some other revenue source.
And that's where my thoughts are. Trying to back away from that applied fund balance and back it down from such a large amount, you know, you have so few opportunities to back that number down. We have an opportunity now. And what that would mean is, yes, we go into the budget somewhere and cut 150K. I just, I think that that's a fiscally sound move, even if some don't recommend that. Because in budgets that aren't as friendly, budget environments that aren't as friendly, that drives out up the amount you would have to cut to get to a, either a tax levy limit or you, you know, it just, something to consider. I mean, we could certainly continue with the presentation, but we don't have, a lot of times with this number, we don't have choices, and I feel like this year we do, so...
I would echo those same thoughts. I would like to get it down to the $1 million like we had talked about previously. I think it's a good opportunity for us to ratchet it down a little bit more, but certainly I think that's more discussions that we would have to have.
I'm comfortable with your proposal. We've shaved off $150,000, I think that's a good beginning. I don't... The past several years, we've ended in a really good spot, so I'm comfortable that this is not going to be compromised.
So if we wanted to talk about contingent budget implications, I'm sure this is a review for everybody, but just so that if the public were to look up our presentation online, they would also know. If the proposed budget were to fail, a second vote can be held, that would be in June. If the second proposed budget were to fail, the district must adopt a contingent budget. Under contingent budget, the tax levy cannot be increased from the prior year. So that would require a reduction of an additional $733,249 from the proposed tax levy. Under contingent budget, no equipment purchases are allowed. We currently have $202,000 allocated towards equipment purchases in this budget. So that would require an additional reduction of $531,049. No non-essential maintenance is allowed, and more importantly, no community use of school facilities without charging a fee is legally allowed. And I do believe that the community does utilize the school facilities frequently here. It's a wonderful asset to the community. So those are the things to keep in mind when talking about contingent budget, and I hope that doesn't come to be, but we need to be aware. So at this point, the revenue and expense budgets are equal. We don't have a gap. I think everybody knows for the status of our budget development, we did, the other thing that we reduced was contract transportation based on projected change in needs, and our benefits were reduced. That's how we got to where we are. The special education placements are continuing to be finalized. That could increase or decrease the budget. I think everybody may recall last spring, when we were getting ready to close the books, we did do some budget transfers and do some carryover encumbrances for those budget, or for those special education placements that happened after the budget was set, just so that we would be okay for this current year. We will look at that again this year, because between now and our next meeting, we are on spring break after the rest of this week. So any meetings that happen after our budget adoption have the opportunity to increase or decrease our budget. So if we are in a place where we have placements that are not accounted for in here, we will look to do a budget transfer and do a carryover encumbrance.
And just to piggyback off of that, some of the most unknown can be from our transitioning from CPSC to CSC students that are in preschool programs that, you know, we don't see as much on a daily basis. So sometimes we rely on some of those outside programs when we look to some of those recommendations. And those meetings occur, we try to hold those later because we try to get the best, the closest possible picture. When we're talking about a four and five-year-old, a couple of months makes a big difference. So we really want to make sure we're making the right recommendations. So a lot of times, we hold those meetings in June to determine, you know, if students are going to come in classified, if they're appropriate for an in-district program, or if there is a need for an out-of-district program.
So the other thing that we're continuing to work on right now, the BOSI's final service request, the FSR, just opened on April 1st, so we're going in and reviewing that. BOSI's often takes the opportunity in the timeframe between when we submit our initial service request and when they open the final service request, they will review it, they will meet with district representatives and review what we've requested. And then they send us changes based on different software licensing fees that may have been modified since we signed up on the initial service request. There may be student needs that have become more clear since then. I think we had signed up for seats in the virtual academic summer school, but they're going to be doing an in-person academic summer school, so those things are going to need to just be finalized as well, and that's not due until after our budget adoption as well. So there will still be some fluctuations as we move forward. We had talked about fuel and electricity costs potentially needing to be accommodated. I've actually put an update on the next page, but as a follow-up, you'll notice on the bottom of this slide, as a follow-up from our last meeting, I did confirm that our transportation vehicle purchases are aided at about 55%. And that also changes over time, but right now, that is the aid ratio for our vehicle purchases. That's not necessarily our aid ratio for our transportation expenses, but for the vehicle purchases. So as we move... It has fluctuated, and it does fluctuate on an annual basis, but I had a call with Bernie Donigan just to, because I was pulling it, and I noticed, there was one year that it was around 80, and then it dropped down again. So I wanted them to verify, because it didn't make a lot of, there wasn't a good solid trend in my head, but they did say that.
What would drive that?
It could be interest rates, it could be our, you know, the pupil decimal ratio that Kathy was talking about that drives our regular transportation aid, does impact that. You know, the state formulas are very complicated. I think sometimes they make them more complicated than they need to be. I feel like sometimes the state budget drives it.
Right, thank you.
So we are going to continue to work on this. We will put a pin in it for the meeting on April 19th, and we will adopt as we need to, and then we will make provisions as the year closes for anything that comes up that has been unanticipated. If there are actual emergent student or instructional needs, I think we tend to have our unappropriated fund balance that the state allows us to carry over at 4%. We never try to use that, but if we need to, we always can. And as I noted before, the facilities director and the transportation director were looking at fuel and electricity costs. Mr. Miller did reach out to me today and say that he would like to increase for one year by $76,000, but if we're trying to reduce the appropriated fund balance, I don't know how the Board would feel about that. My original plan being that we could increase it for one year on both sides as a placeholder, but that's up to the Board. I did just leave the slides in for the vehicles, just as a reminder that that is going to be presented to the voters. Proposition for $322,000 for these vehicles, and that is the language that will be on the proposition. And as the Board knows, we are going to have one additional meeting on April 19th, very briefly, just to adopt the budget. And then on Wednesday, will be the regularly scheduled Board meeting, where the Board will vote on the Ulster BOSI's annual budget and election. So I updated our budget calendar and inserted the language that they had put out regarding the April 19th vote, which is put into place to accommodate the military ballots that need to go out. So I did put a request into Ulster BOSI's that in the future, maybe, since this date is now the day right next to their vote, if they could accommodate all of the districts and maybe make their vote coincide with this date in the future, that would be very helpful. But I think when they were setting their vote date, I don't know that they even knew that this date existed. This sort of snuck up on all districts.
Did we, did we decide on a time on a 19th?
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m.
Via Zoom.
Okay.
I'll send that link to you as well.
Yeah, no problem.
So that would be the purpose of voting on the budget and accepting the Board candidates?
Placing the Board candidates on the ballot, yep.
On the ballot, that's what I mean, not accepting them.
Yes, they will be placed on the ballot.
On your item for Page 10, so our, do we have to vote on the increase? What do you need us to do?
I think, I think much to Heather and Mike, feeling like the appropriated fund balance actually needs to go down is counter to this idea of adding that. So I think we just need to come to a consensus on where the appropriated fund balance will be, and then we will need to make it work.
I guess I'm not understanding the correlation between the two. So we were increasing for the electric and fuel by taking it from that 150, is that right?
No, that would be in addition to the 150, but it would be a one-year, so I would add to the appropriated fund balance, and the actual expense budget would increase by that amount as well, so they would be corresponding. And in the next year, it could come off of both sides. Because I would hope that by then, our electric and fuel budgets would be more stabilized.
So you're, are you looking at changing that number to 226?
Correct. But then the expense budget would also go up by $76,000. So it would, it would affect both sides, and then next year, it would come off of both sides.
I mean, that's okay, because it doesn't remain, like other allocations that must remain, you know, there's a planned exit of that amount. And that's what really unallocated fund balances for those types of expenses. So I'm not opposed to that. It's, it's, it's the other, it's the...
The legacy type thing.
Yes. You know, when I, I think when I got on the Board, it was around 850 to 900,000, and now it's 1.3 million. And in most cases, we talked about, you know, this does create internal pressure into the budget, but we were told there's very few opportunities to ever back that off, and those opportunities are rare. And in this particular budget season, it's a rare, because we're getting additional aid with regard to the foundation, which is aid that does remain. It's, once adjusted, for the most part, it stays with the district. So anyway, that's the thought. If we can get it down to a million, that'd be advantageous. Heather and I feel that way. If the majority doesn't, I work with consensus. Taking a small bite is better than no bite, I can live with that. But I also know that, I've been here nine years, and it's really the first opportunity we could back it down, so I'd rather take a little bit of a bigger bite. That's my rationale, but...
That's a good move.
I'm still fine with the small bite.
If you reduce that to a million, and then where do you apply?
Then I'd have to add the 76 back. But as, as Mike said, that's, I feel like that 76 is a separate thing, because we would increase both sides of the budget, and, you know, everybody hears the same message, next year, we would bring that back down.
You're right, you're right, hopefully.
What's up? I'm in favor of bringing it down to the 1 million.
I'm, I'm fine with Victoria's recommendation of 1,001,500.
You know, we go, we go round and round this. I'm going to put my faith in Victoria, because everything I'm seeing is, so I'll stand by Victoria's recommendation.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. It does. We are now at the...
You need to get to your mic. It's on, you just need to bring it closer.
Okay. We are now at the consent part of our agenda, and we are looking at Items A1 through C3. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to vote no on one of the items, so does that have to be pulled out? It does have to be? Okay, so C1, if we could pull that out, because I'm going to vote no.
C1?
Can we also pull out G/A, please?
We're not going to G. G is separate. Consent ends at C3.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
One correction that I have.
Go ahead.
On the Minutes of March 8th, under Appointments, the Coaching Amendment, it states that we move to approve unanimously the varsity girls golf volunteer assistant coach. I think that was just a typo, at least, I think, because on the next page, we tabled the coaching appointments, which were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I think you just got to flip that.
Yeah, I had provided that feedback in my comments on the, on the Minutes as well.
Yeah, there, thank you.
I think it says the, it says the approval, and then it says tabled, and then in the next section, it says more of the language of tabled, so that just needs to get moved up.
Yeah, you just got to flip them.
Yep.
Okay, so...
All motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, Mike. All in favor of the amended consent agenda?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Do the stale dated checks, read it, and then vote.
Okay, so now I am going to read C1. Stale dated checks. Be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent as well as the external auditor, approve the action from the district treasurer to write off the attached mention stale dated checks as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second. It says the attached mention stale dated checks, is, will that be in part of the record? Or, because it says to write off the attached mention stale dated checks?
Yeah, I think it was attached to the last meeting, but that got tabled, I didn't see attached, but it should be.
So it will be, okay. I'm sorry, I'm reading just the paper, my paper copy.
It is attached.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, we don't have to do a... We don't have to do a roll call on this. We can just do a all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Yeah, we had the second.
Sue and Heather.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yes. I mean, no. Yes. I'm voting no. Yes!
We got it.
It's on first.
We got it. All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to G, personnel. We have a side letter of agreement, HCSD and HTA. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the attached side letter of agreement between Highland Central School District and the Highland Teachers Association regarding Article 13.9.01 and the retirement incentive set forth in Appendix A of the collective bargaining agreement.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Second by Al. Any discussion? Any further discussion on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed.
Item B, resignation. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accepts the resignation of the following employee as presented to the board at this meeting. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Second by Al. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay. Got it? Thank you. Our student representative.
She apologized that she had a game this evening. You will see her at the next meeting.
Playing under lights or what? She couldn't make it, right?
Was it an away game?
Lisa says you're asking too many questions. I don't know.
They're playing under the lights. I know she had a game. She has a game.
We have softball going on. I don't know what she's engaged in.
Right. I apologize if she is not here. I know she had a game.
Might have been an away game.
Right. Good day. Good day. Assistant Superintendent Patrick?
Good evening, everyone. Couple of updates on some of our programs. Our Special Olympics team, who normally competes in the spring, normally does so at West Point. West Point, right now, has some pretty strict restrictions with folks coming in and out of there. So this year, we will not be participating in the games there, but we will be doing our own set of games here. And the team has been practicing in preparation for their own games. Our program will be giving a work-based learning opportunity at Hannaford in Highland. Big thank you to them for accepting our students. We had been working on some of the hurdles just to get through and paperwork and stuff, and we submitted something the other day for final approval. So some of our students will be working at Hannaford and Red Hook as part of their experience. So we're very thankful for them and the community for allowing that. I want to thank our special ed coordinators, specifically at the 3 through 5 and 6 through 8 level, Rita Will and Marissa Curcio. They were very integral in helping prepare our students and working with our administration to ensure all of our students with disabilities received the appropriate testing accommodations last week in our ELA testing, and it ran very smoothly. So they do a lot of preparation work to make sure that the students are grouped in certain ways, that they're all receiving everything that they need for the test, and that they're in comfortable situations to take that test. So a big thank you to them. It's a big undertaking with that planning there. As part of the American Rescue Plan, they kind of consistently roll another thing out. Every once in a while, we get another notification that, hey, there's a little bit of money for certain areas. So we just received a notification that we'll be receiving a little bit more money as part of the American Rescue Plan, specifically for homeless children and youth. So they base it on your percentage of homeless children.
This is above the 4 million?
This is an addition piece to that.
Wow, that's great.
So we received, it's just under $12,000, and it's very specific to some of the criteria. So I actually met today with our homeless liaison, talking about some of the ways that we might be able to utilize that money for those students. They really look on how we can support them as best as possible, and give them some extra opportunities and resources for students that are in a very difficult situation. So we'll be submitting that as we look to finalize how we're going to allocate that money. On March 25th, we had our superintendent's conference days, and I know at the next board meeting, some of the principals will be talking about that. One of the things I did want to mention, and working closely with Mr. Darling at the elementary school, we had Dr. Katie Cunningham come in from the Rose Hill Institute. She's a professor at Manhattanville College, and she came in to present to our elementary staff on dyslexia and the science of reading, and some of the early warning signs. And it was an excellent presentation and very well received by some of our elementary staff. She did a fantastic job presenting, and we're hoping to continue some work with her in the future. And I know Mr. Darling will talk a little bit more about that, but I just wanted to put in a plug, and thank you to our reading department down there for helping to organize Dr. Cunningham coming in. And lastly, we have started the process for finding a new technology director. The first round of interviews have been conducted, so we will be looking to conduct the second round in the next week or so, as we look to finalize some candidates to ultimately send to one of you guys for approval.
Thank you, Patrick.
Your mic's off.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to highlight some of the things that have been happening here that have been very exciting, that we are somewhat back to some normal routines. The high school put on their drama production last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of Freaky Friday. Thursday evening, were you in that show?
I was working.
You were working the sound. I know, I saw you there.
I was doing the lighting.
Oh, lighting. Great. Well, you did a great job, and the sound guys did a great job as well.
Yeah, that was a neat job.
Wonderful. So on Thursday evening, they had a dress rehearsal, and we invited the senior citizens from the community to come in and enjoy the show. We had snacks for them. In prior years, a few years back, we did it as a dinner theater. We did not have enough time to pull that together for this year, but the seniors were very appreciative of that event. Mr. Zimmer, myself, and Dr. Boyd were in attendance on Thursday evening, and then it ran for two more evenings, Friday and Saturday night. So congratulations to them. Congratulations to the high school that they pulled off the Brooks barbecue. It was quite a success, as we all have been hearing about this week. They sold out of their 80 walk-in dinners within an hour. So we're hoping that becomes an annual or a biannual event here at the high school. I unfortunately was not able to partake, because I was not on site, but I've heard great reviews today. So congratulations to the PTSA on running that event. As we mentioned at the last board meeting, and I did send a message out to our families, as long as we don't use another emergency day before this coming Friday, we will return one of the emergency days to the calendar on Easter Monday on April 18th. And then assuming we don't use any additional days between then and Memorial Day, we will return the second day on May 27th. Just a public service announcement to the community, we have COVID-at-home antigen tests available. Please do not go and purchase them at a store. We have plenty here that we can provide to our students, our faculty, our staff, and the community. They just need to stop by any one of our buildings. They have them at the front entrances. They don't even have to come in. Just go up to the front door, and the security will hand you a test at the door, or you could send a note in with your child, and the nurses will make sure that a test goes home with the children that day. I did get a call from Dr. Smoller from the Village Apothecary. They are now administering a second booster to anyone who is interested age 50 and above. He can do that at his location at the Village Apothecary in Woodstock, but he can do it at multiple other locations as well. We are looking to try to coordinate a date where he can bring that back on site at least one, possibly two more times for that second booster for anyone who is interested, but also anyone who has not started the series. He can go all the way back to the beginning and start the series if someone is interested in getting COVID vaccines. So as you can probably imagine, many districts are vying for his service to get in and hold events in the evening. So unfortunately, I was not available for most of last week to have follow-up phone calls with him during the day. So my plan is to talk to him tomorrow to see what we can get here in Highland. I've been mentioning this for the last few months, and I don't think, actually, I will have one more board meeting where I can make this plug. Our educational foundation will be having the Spring Fling on Saturday, April 23rd. We will be honoring Lenny Awkmoody, Peter Miller, and Patty Stephens at that dinner. So if you have not gotten your ticket, please, the posters are out, and the flyers are in all of our schools and on our website. Please contact Luke Secunda to reserve your table. It's always a very good night, so hopefully people will come out for that. Unfortunately, due to much illness this past month, the direct meeting was postponed, and then all of the dates that they were coming up with conflicted with either board meetings. And in two weeks, we're going to have two board meetings. So they have opted to just cancel the March meeting. So the next one will be March 26th, or sorry, April 26th at 6:00 p.m. I know I mentioned this at the last board meeting, but on May 14th, we will be running a blood drive here in honor of one of our students that's going through a pretty serious situation with his health. His parents asked if they could coordinate with the folks at the American Red Cross to get a blood drive here on campus. I know those posters are already on our Facebook page, on our website, and on social media. So I encourage anyone who can give blood to consider coming out on May 14th to the high school to do that. Last week, as Dr. Boyd said, we did our first round of New York State 3 through 8 testing in ELA. Although we still had some opting out, our numbers are down from previous years. So there were 119 in grades 6 through 8 and 65 at the elementary school. So the number is starting to go in the direction of folks getting back on board with taking those tests. I did finally hear from Olster Bosse's. There was a question from the board about bringing them in to do a presentation on the PTEC program. I gave Dr. Corey the dates of all of our upcoming board meetings, and he thought May 3rd would be the best date. So if anyone, well, I should say, I'm going to confirm with him tomorrow that that's the date that we will have them come and do that presentation, unless anyone has a concern with that date. I didn't think so. So that's all that I have.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Question for you. Great gesture on the part of the school for giving the senior citizens the opportunity to be at that play. I know the last couple of years with COVID, we have not done the senior citizens prom.
Correct.
And is there any plans on reinstating that?
Not for this year. The organizers organized the, I believe, that's what they were organizing for the folks to come in for the play. So no plan for the senior citizens prom this year.
Okay. With thoughts, potential thoughts about for next year?
They actually were talking to the senior citizens that were in attendance that evening, and I know Patty Stephens was here, Emery Mizell was here, and they were talking to the seniors to see what kind of an event they most liked a lot, enjoy the idea of having the dinner and the play. So that doesn't mean we can't do both, but, you know, when you're putting something forward, they're kind of going with what the folks are asking for.
If that's to take the place of that...
We could do both.
Potentially.
That is something that that group is working on, looking forward to the future.
Good.
I will say that there were a lot of seniors in attendance, and many of them did take COVID tests home with them. So that was a nice service. And I would say that there were many more masks being worn that evening by the folks in the audience, because there has been a slight uptick. And if you think of a vulnerable population, you know, our senior citizens definitely have some fears, and, you know, they were wearing masks. So yeah, we'll keep reaching out to them and get them engaged any way we can.
Keep them involved, and it's great. Something for them to do. Thank you. Board of Education, new business. General Counsel Retainer Hours, Proposed Legal Services Contract. Has everybody had the opportunity to view that? Is there any questions on that?
No questions, as long as the administration's comfortable.
Comfortable.
Board consensus? Good?
As long as the administration's comfortable.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Sue?
Second.
Trying to think here. Hold on.
That's the top of the page.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I thought that was attached to the thing below it. Be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the attached contract effective for the 2022-2023 school year between Highland Central School District and Thomas, Strohan, Waxman, Pettigrew, and Maylie LLP TDWPM as presented at this meeting. Have a motion.
Move it.
Sue? Second by Al. Any questions beyond that? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? So carried. We are now at item number two. The SEQRA, SECR, capital project. And do we have any questions on that prior to me reading this? We're good in leaving this in here? Okay.
We know it's mandatory if you're going to engage in a capital project.
If you're going to go to the next thing, you got to...
Exactly. Exactly. Following resolution is titled, Declare the District-Wide Capital Project a Type II SECR Action. Whereas the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District is considering a district-wide capital improvement project to renovate, rehabilitate, and reconstruct district-wide facilities, including but not limited to exterior building, site, and interior improvements, classroom renovations, ventilation upgrades, electrical upgrades, mechanical upgrades, roof replacements, piping, installation of new press box, expansion of bleachers, and replacement of a natural grass field with synthetic turf. This is a proposed action, and whereas the proposed action qualifies as a Type II action set forth in 6 NYCRR Part 617.5, State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as SECR, because it involves replacement, reconstruction, and/or rehabilitation involving no substantial changes or expansion beyond 10,000 square feet of existing structures and/or facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District hereby declares the proposed action is a Type II action, and therefore not subject to further review under 6 NYCRR Part 617. That's the addendum.
No. Do that first.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Sue?
Second.
Second by Heather. That's the addendum.
No, do that one first.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Sue?
Second.
Second by Heather. Any further discussion on this, or any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Addendum, Proposed Capital Project Propositions, October 18th, 2022. Be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following propositions to be presented to the voters at the special district meeting of the Highland Central School District to be conducted on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Proposition number one, shall the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District be authorized to: 1. Construct additions to and construct various district buildings, facilities, and sites; acquire original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purpose for which such buildings, facilities, and sites are to be used; and pay costs incidental thereto at a maximum aggregate cost of $16,960,000. 2. Expand such sum for such purposes, including the expenditure from the Capital Reserve Fund of $1,896,72, plus any interest accrued thereon as of the date of the vote. 3. Levy the necessary to therefore be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts as may be determined by the Board of Education, taking into account state aid and the amount expended from the Capital Reserve Fund. And 4. In anticipation of the collection of such tax issued, bonds, and notes of the district at one time or from time to time in a principal amount not to exceed $15,63,928 and levy a tax to pay interest on said obligations when due. Proposition 2.
Tom, excuse me. I—you all know how I feel. I do not want to vote yes on this. So should we take a vote now on on Proposition 1? Because I am not in favor of going to the ceiling because of the Bosse's debt. So I just how do we do this mechanically?
So motion?
Motion to pull apart the propositions 1 and 2 into separate action items. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I don't think you can do that.
So.
Second.
Motion to separate the two.
Right. I don't know if you can do that.
I don't know either.
I don't think you can, since one is contingent upon the other.
2.
Hmm.
So if you're voting no for 1, you're voting no for 2.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm voting yes for 2.
Unless we haven't checked.
This will be.
This was written by legal counsel after conversations about what our plan was, so.
This is a roll call, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I can't—I can't vote—I can't vote no on 1 and yes on 2.
Right. It's together.
Hmm.
You could vote no on the whole thing.
2 is contingent on 1.
Hmm. Oh. Okay, okay, keep reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you start over so we can hear it again?
Excuse me?
I'm just kidding. I'm sorry, I didn't. I said, why don't you start reading that over again so we can hear it all again? No, 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 no.
All right, Proposition 2. Only if Proposition number 1 is approved by the voters, shall the Board of Education—
Max.
We good?
Yes.
Okay. Shall the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District be authorized to: 1. Reconstruct and improve district athletic fields, tracks, facilities, and sites, including installation of a new synthetic field, and acquire original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purpose for which such athletic fields, tracks, facilities, and site are to be used at a maximum cost of $4,660,000. How is it? 92, yeah, I'm sorry. And 2. Spend such sum for such purpose. 3. Levy the necessary tax therefore to be levied and collect in annual installments in such years and in such amounts as may be determined by the Board of Education, taking into account state aid. And 4. In anticipation of the collection of—getting there—such tax issued, bonds, and notes of the district at one time or from time to time in the principal amount not to exceed $4,660,092 and levy of a tax to pay the interest on such obligations when due. Be it further resolved that the district clerk is hereby directed to include notice of special meeting along with mentioned propositions in the designated newspapers. Be it further resolved that this resolution take effect immediately upon its adoption. Lisa.
Okay, at this point, I'll do a roll call, and I'll just state your name, and you just respond by either yes or no. Mike Bakaxias?
Yes.
Alan Barone?
Yes.
Ed Mizell?
Yes.
Heather Welch?
Yes.
Sue Gilmour?
May I abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Abstain.
Okay. Tom Miller?
Yes.
That's five in favor, one abstain.
No.
Yep.
Four? Okay.
It's five.
That's five, yeah.
Five and one absent.
Five, yeah, yep, yep, got it.
I'll make the motion to move it forward. We didn't—we didn't do that, so there needs to be a second motion.
That was a motion.
Al and Ed.
Al and Ed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I?
Hold business.
May I mention something?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to mention, because I know trustee Barone was interested in knowing if we are able to add to the Capital Reserve, if we can add additional Capital Reserve. So the bond council said we would need to re-adopt a revised resolution, which we could still do within 45 days of the vote.
Yeah.
So.
We're quite premature on adopting this.
Right. This is very early, just so that we can get the ball rolling and get things happening. But I did look into that, and if we aren't—if we are at that place and we have additional funds to put in the Capital Reserve and the board wants to apply them to this project, we can still do that.
Within 45 days?
Of the October—okay. Wow, okay, that's great.
It's—it's always nice to know our options. Thank you.
That we have options.
Right, and that we have options, that's correct. Okay.
So I would say that if we're going to do that, we should shoot for like the first meeting in August so that we don't get ourselves tied up and don't meet our target date so that we can get everything out. So that's what I would propose that you shoot for. I think you still could do it at the second meeting, but if it's going to be discussed and you're going to need more time, I think we need to have a—I think we always have to try to target sooner than later so that we have time to discuss if that's what the board's decision is to be.
Yes, because we don't know what the additional fund balance into our Capital Reserve is going to do to impact the overall.
Correct.
Dollar amount of the of the project. And then that means discussion to add scope, if that's what we're going to do, so.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to—
Go ahead.
No, you're good. Just to add to that, and possibly the support services might want to do some preliminary talk at some point in time to put some items on on a list of priority to pick up and add to it. So it's a quicker cycle.
Correct.
Otherwise, we could be here for a while discussing what we want to add. Okay. Anymore?
Thank you, Victor.
No? Okay. Hold business. Candidate candidacy petitions. As a reminder, petitions for nominating candidates to the Office of Board of Education for Highland Central School District are available at the central office between the hours of 8:00 and 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except for April 18th, which is by 5:00 PM. Petitions are due in the central office by Monday, April 18th, by 5:00 PM. Any—for any questions?
Okay.
Well, we're good.
We are. The only question is in terms of—we are on break, which we will discuss, Mr. Frider and I. So I will be leaking out the email to those that have picked up a petition that have not returned it. If they would like to still bring it on April 18th between 4:00 and 5:00, I will be available outside the district office to accept that. But I will check to see if they would like to bring it in any time from this point on. Next week, the school—the office is open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So I'll just send out an email to remind the people that have picked up the petitions.
That's obviously if they're still interested.
Exactly.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a little preemptive there. For any questions, you may contact district office or Lisa Siniglia at lsiniglia@highland-k12.org or via phone at 845-691-1020, extension 3137. Miscellaneous. Ulster County School Board Association proposed annual budget and election and meeting info. Information regarding the Ulster County School Board Association meeting for Thursday, April 7th, is attached. The vote for budget and election will take place on April 20th. Highland Central School District Board of Ed meeting.
That will be one of the agenda items on our board meeting.
Okay.
That's why it will be held on a Wednesday.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Correspondence. As a reminder, due to the annual meeting and election for Ulster County Bosse's, the next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 20th. Ulster County School Board Association Distinguished Friend of Education Awards to be held on May 26th. Please RSVP to district clerk or Shyla Beck by May 9th. FYI from the district clerk, due to the holiday week, the agendas for Highland Central School District Board of Ed meetings for April 19th and April 20th will not be posted for public until Monday, April 18th at 7:00 PM. Public comments. General items. Nobody's interested, thank you.
Thank you, public.
And—
Thank you, cameraman.
We have an adjournment, but we are going to go back into a second executive session for personnel reasons.
No need to come back out, right? So Lisa can—
No action.
Yeah.
No action.
Okay, so we just need a motion to go into executive session?
Look for a motion, please.
Move it.
Sue and Heather.
Heather. Sorry.
Thank you.